Do we begin the meeting? First item up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice.
Welcome, everybody. First item up is to approve the meeting agenda. Got a couple of additions to make. One is to the consent agenda. Item G. Accept resignation of Abigail Jurok as elementary music teacher. And under business items, item H. Will be a resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax amendment. Do we have any else? Anything else to add or subtract from the agenda?
No, I'll move as amended or as stated by the chairperson.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on the agenda? No further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Anybody would like to address the board?
I'd like to.
Since the agenda's been approved, I'm glad you're not tabling G, 5G. Or moving it later in the meeting. I just wanted to publicly say thank you for everybody who's given support, not only for me personally, but for my position, and I think that's been a good, a good, a good thing. So, thank you to everyone.
Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, let's move on to consent items. Item A, approve membership renewal of MREA for 2019, 2020 for $2,062. Approve membership renewal with MSBA 2019, 2020 for $4,838. Approve the memorandum of understanding with Otterton County Family Services Collaborative for 2018, excuse me, 2019, 2020. Approve the start and end times for the school day for 2019, 2020. Elementary will start at 7:45 and dismiss at 3:15. High school will start at 7:55 and dismiss at 3:25. Approve the insurance renewal for, with AMP for 2019, 2020. Approve the agreement with Lutheran Social Services for 2019, 2020. Item G personnel, reinstate district tech position. Hire Harold Holt as high school teacher for 2019, 2020. And accept the resignation of Abigail Jurok as elementary music teacher. I don't have much behind that, but...
She accepted the bar's role position because her position, she was being reduced to 1.5 years.
So now you'll have a...
We'll take a look at the schedule to see how that does, works.
Okay. Is that something we could fill from within?
We, we may, we're, we're looking at whether we can juggle that in between Lori and Fitz, how that might, might work.
Okay.
We also have somebody interested in maybe doing a couple of that, couple hours.
Also have a question on the start and end times. I'm assuming that gets rid of any built-in storm days? Correct? Back to the old way.
I'll entertain a motion for the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as soon as...
Motion by Mike, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Consent items carried. Business items. Item A, approve the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities. There were some changes to that, right?
There are. At this moment, GASB, before coming out, we don't know how that's going to play out. We're kind of still waiting for the auditors to, and our accounting system region one to kind of give us a, a lead on how to go about the system. They briefly mentioned it into, in our year-end conference regarding what the timeline is going to be, and the majority of the work is going to come in early fall. At this moment, to my understanding, the only thing we needed to adapt was the new policy 713, which I believe was done in the last, in the last board meeting. Mark, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add that this is coming about because there's been nationwide abuse of, of these funds. And you're getting caught up in the swell here to try to get things cleaned up and corrected and what have you. And in some cases, it's just outright remove some of these accounts away from the school district. So, the state has not come out, like Rudy indicated, they have not come out with clear-cut rules on what needs to be done. But during the school year, you'll have some changes that will take place, and it may be some operational things that have to be done by the people who manage these funds, or in some cases, the funds will have to be set up and accounted outside the school district and managed.
Do we know if this means they'll be able to utilize the funds for what they need for...
I'm not sure. I mean, one of the, one of the reasons for not being under board control is student groups can make donations to various organizations. And when you bring them under board control, you're, you're prevented from that. Whether that rule stays in effect or not hasn't been determined. But yes, expect change.
So those that have raised funds for what they need them for, are they going to be able to use them?
Well, that's where I say it may end up being a situation where they'll, they'll have to go out and create their own 501(c) organization nonprofit, open up their own checking account, transfer the money over, and let them take care of it.
Is it almost like Booster Club then?
Yeah, that's, might be what has to happen in some cases, yes. But in some cases, you may have kind of a quasi Booster Club already within the school district. We'll have to figure out how that's opened.
What's the purpose of the resolution? I mean, I get the idea, but I mean, if it's, why, why is it required to direct administration if it's already required under state law?
Well, it's not state law, it's what's called GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And they're just putting you, the school board, on notice that these funds now have to be under board control, and from that point on, we'll have to start making the decisions on how that all works. I think the state had tried to get all these rules in place before this period in time, but they just haven't been able to do so.
What was the acronym, GASB?
GASB.
That's definitely...
Government Accounting Standards Board. What that does is, it's a set of rules on how governmental funds are accounted for. And so, we have to follow those rules, and auditors have to follow those rules when they report to the public.
Who enforces the rules?
The auditors and the state auditor's office.
Thanks, Mark. So I'll entertain a motion to proceed with the resolution.
Do you need to read the resolution?
Do I need to read it first, or do we need a motion second?
Yes.
Ted? Read it first. So, resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities, whereas Minnesota Session Laws 2019, for special session, channel... Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5, require changes in the accounting for student activity funds and school boards must take charge of and control all student activities for public schools in the district, and that all money received or expended for extracurricular activities shall be recorded in the same manner as other revenues and expenditures of the district. Therefore, be resolved that the school board of Pelican Rapids Independent School District 548 directs the district administration to implement the requirements of Minnesota Session Laws 2019, for special session, Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities.
Motion by Mike, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Brenda. Sends us a resolution. Do a roll call. Brittany?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Next item up is approve the 2019, 2020 preliminary budget.
Okay, we're going to spend the majority of the time just kind of going over the summary pages. Essentially, what we are proposing now, we are projecting to end our fund balance of $394 and end this coming fiscal year. We are projecting to have revenues of $9.5 million, expanded others at $9.8 million, ending our fund balance somewhere in the ballpark of about $99,000. We understand that some other changes have taken place after the reductions were approved, and in that event, we are accounting for them separately, just to keep aware and kind of keep track of the additional financial impacts that might potentially bring the fund balance even further down. Do you guys have any questions regarding the budget that needs to be adopted before July 1st, so we can continue operations in the business office?
Are you saying that it could be slightly better with the, with the reductions made?
Other way.
Other way. That's not what I want to do. Okay.
And when we started these budget talks earlier this year, has it, how much has it varied since we started talking? Has it changed?
It has varied a little bit. One of the things that we tried to understand a little bit more in depth was our debt. So it took a little bit of time for us to really structure and determine how everything came together. One of the findings that we did was capital on public funding fees, which I'll talk about a little bit more in the Fund Term Facility Maintenance Program. Just understanding how that all came about. Again, Mark and I were new to the system and understanding years and layers of complexity that a little bit to understand. So essentially, what I'm saying is, we found a direct loan with a bank that accounts for about $100,000. So we had to figure out where that money's coming from, so we can pay that debt, that obligation.
I move to, I move to approve the proposed 2019, 2020 budget. As of June 17, 2019, that was put into our packets.
No second?
I would just like to add that you did, on the consent agenda tonight, approve bringing back the technology position. And what Rudy is saying is that $99,000 no longer exists. You've now spent that farther down. So, okay. And what we plan on doing is creating, like you mentioned, a list every month, probably on the board report, so as things pop up, positive or negative, we'll try to keep track of the changes to the budget so that you're aware, made aware.
Scorecard? Exactly, sure. Okay. Motion, a second, any discussion on approving the budget? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor approving the preliminary budget for 2019, 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Approve participation in the Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program.
So, Mark and I have kind of been planting the seat to you guys regarding anticipation. I've sent you guys a lot of the information regarding what it is and how it goes about. Essentially, what we're trying to do is we want you guys to pass a motion, giving us the okay to move forward with the application. We have to submit the application, I believe, before the 20th of June, in which we then have to do pretty much a cash flow projection to understand what our borrowing capacity is. From there, we work with Baker, Baker Tilly, previously known as Springsteen, who is our financial advisor, to tell us, pretty much what they do is they pull together all the schools that need short-term borrowing. And they pull everything together to make sure that we get lower interest rates on the money that, that we obtain. We then get those funds somewhere in September, I believe, which we then we park in our mislap investment accounts to try to recoup some of those interest, that way to offset that, that borrowing cost. The reason why we're doing this is because if you guys remember back in January and February, and some of those board reports, special reports, was that we had very little cash on hand. And the reason that that happens is because in February, we have a lot of our bond payments come due. This year was about $1.7 million, which strained all of our investment accounts, essentially making us live on state aid. If by any means the state misses a payment, we are in trouble. We do not want to be in that position. We cannot miss pay. So aid anticipation gives us the opportunity to have cash on hand to pay our employees. That's the solely purpose that we are doing this. Now, I did check with Baker Tilly to understand a little bit more about the program and what we're going to do, so I apologize because we might have to request a special board meeting. So we submit the application after you guys pass the motion. Then Baker Tilly sends us a packet and says, this is how much you can borrow, this is how much we think that, that you will be able to pay your debt back. And then at that point, you guys have to pass a formal resolution before July 10. So again, I apologize because the timing unfortunately is not in our favor, and I know that the next July board meeting is on the 22nd. But the first step is for you guys to give us the okay to go for short-term borrowing.
I move to approve participation in Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Ann. Any discussion on approving participation in Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program?
Not here, but thanks Rudy for the explanation.
Yeah. It's, it was very, very common, all the state shot down years ago, a lot of school districts had to go in short-term borrowing. And you said the statistics, the statistics that three schools participated in the last two years or so. So we're going to be in that pool next year.
And we've done this in the past when things were tough. I don't know if we dipped into it that much, if at all, but at least we knew we had a safety net.
Exactly. Mark, do you have anything to add?
Just in case you're wondering why aid anticipation, as the name implies, they're using the anticipation of future aid payments from the state as collateral. And so, the concept here is, if you can't make your payment, your, the state will pay it directly.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor approving participation in anticipation borrowing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B, LTFM discussion.
Okay, so, the reason why I was bringing this up again is just to kind of understand a little bit about more how we are structuring some revenue and some of our debt, and how, what it means to us. And I think it's more than anything serves you guys a purpose to understand a lot of the times where these dollars go, how they're spent. So we just put together a quick summary regarding what it is. So for fiscal year 20, what you see this first figure here, that is adjusted pupil units, essentially what the state does, it takes our, our students, our enrollment of students, and they waited, and they do all these calculations. And after they do the weighted average, they say, we think you have 961 students sitting from start to end on their chair. And again, you know, between seventh through twelfth grade, the weighted average is about 1.2. After that, the state, state then says, for, for every APU, you get about $880. So essentially, that comes to about $365,000. Then the state says, but wait a minute, we're also going to give you $538,000 because we understand that you have some bonds out there that you need to pay. So then they go through what they call an equalization factor to say, how much state aid are you going to get, and how much levy dollars are you going to get? So what it means for us is that we are land-rich in terms of our district. So what they do is they take into account and say you have about $18 million of land capacity in your, in your district. They divide that by the pupil units, and they say, and it comes to about, about $18,000. The average in order to qualify for state aid is $10,000. So they say you're about $18,000 over, therefore you don't qualify for state aid. So it's all going to be on levy dollars. So, the $903,000 that you see here, it's all levy dollars that we get. So that's how the revenue is calculated. Now, where Mark and I did a lot of understanding to see where our colors went, was the fact that out of that $903, $704,000 are already tied and committed to bond payments. And this is where, where I share the previous statements to say that we took some time to really understand our debt. So, and here it is. In 2012, we bonded $4.2 million for alternative facilities. It's my understanding that, that is when we upgraded the HVAC system here at the high school. In 2016, we bonded again for $1.6 million, and I believe that was for the HVAC system at the elementary. Then again, in 2006, we bonded for another nine point, or $1.9 million. And this one, I'm still trying to do research to see what we cover, but it was for our maintenance of our facilities. Okay? So, what the payment breakdown is, it's right here. You see that principal and payment, principal and interest comes out to about $704,000. So that covers the majority of the revenue that we get from our levy dollars. So essentially, what that means is that we only get out, we only have left over about $198 to do all these capital projects to what Trevor presented to you as prior to us. Really fully understanding how it all flowed through, and, and then it gets a little bit more complex than that. So out of the $198, we have to figure out how to pay that capital, that direct loan that we additionally took out. So, $101,000 has to come out of that 98. And by state statute, then we have to invest some dollars of that 198 for health and safety. That's about another $20,000. So essentially, what it means is Trevor only has about $100 to about $110,000 to upkeep our facilities during his summer projects.
So, his list is going to be cut.
Exactly. You're right. And that means that it's gonna be cut for the next ten years. Essentially, what the state is saying is, is why should we give you more dollars if you guys already bonded for the upkeep of your building? And these are only three bonds of the five that we have, that we own. Here, you don't see the twenty-six million dollar bond for the losing facility.
That's different.
That is different.
Correct.
So that is just-
You went out for a vote on that one, so.
And then from, essentially, so that one ninety-eight, what you see here, this is the ten-year expenditure plan. So I'll try to zoom in just a little bit more. So this is what, what we are projecting, this is what we have to submit to the state to say, we're gonna spend about two hundred and thirteen thousand this year on projects. And then you can kind of see how we structure it. Now, again, this ten-year plan is subject to change at any minute because pipes don't tell us when they're gonna burst and where we're gonna need that money. So this is always a, a moving target, and we always try to do our best to project. And Trevor does a very good job of telling us next year I'm gonna focus on this, the year after that I'm gonna focus on that, and we work very closely with them. In terms of the revenue, here it is. So that big, and again, this is just a summary page, the calculations are very large, but here is your ten-year projection in terms of the general, for levy dollars that we get for long-term facility maintenance projects. As you can see, it's, excuse me, stays very consistent. And out of that one ninety, I always think that we have to pay that loan back.
How many years does that?
The loan was a fifteen-year loan, and it matures in about twenty, twenty-four, I believe.
So five more years of it?
Five more years. We got about a half a million dollars to pay back. And that loan was taken out directly from Honeywell Financing, and it was for a lot of the HVAC controls. Honeywell Finance had sold the debt on the secondary market to Capital One Public Fund. So again, this was only informational, no action needed from you guys. We just wanted to share a lot of the things that we are uncovering as we kind of go through the office to give you guys the most information to, to continue and move forward.
Thank you.
So we capped at what we can levy by the state?
Yeah, you're pretty much have committed yourself, at least for the next five years, to, towards this project to get what you've accomplished here. And I don't know the decision at that time, but most people kind of think that you got a new building, it's gonna be many years before I have to do any maintenance on it. That's not always the case in reality, but that was the premise, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yeah, those projects were made back before the building project, figuring we have to do it anyway, and so we recycle in the, the new project anyway, because we knew we had to do it.
Correct.
So, yeah. Someone that was helping safety levy, wasn't it? But now that's-
It could have been, because that's ruled into LTFM.
Yeah, this, so. Next up will be baseball discussion. No, discussion, no. Next item up will be baseball discussion. For discussion, is just the changes?
I think we just had a change in the lease agreement specifying specific dates or weekends was the only change.
What did you have out here on the website? Do you have anything new, Andrew?
I did, I just confirmed the dates with Randy. I did not, I did not get another copy of it, so. I was just asking if item number five, I thought was still, still in the new lease agreement.
So Thursday is when the update was sent to us in email. You said item five, Andrew?
Yeah, is the, is the rent still included?
From the Thursday update, it is in that.
So the six dates that we were just focusing on for the lease would be the last Saturday, Sunday in July.
Yep.
First Saturday, Sunday, August, and then following Friday, Saturday, barring no rain. So.
Right here, it shows July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, August second through fourth, August ninth through eleventh. Seems pretty accurate, all these.
Yeah, maybe just the third, fourth. The second, third, fourth.
He's just looking for the three weekends for the amateur regional tournament?
Yep, that's all we're focusing on.
Wasn't here last week, was there a discussion? With number five, I mean, it-
It wasn't brought up last week.
As far as the net proceeds for the school district, was there any discussion on that from a board standpoint? I would encourage the board that if it is agreeable to allow for approval lease that did not be... I don't, I mean, ten percent, I don't know what the, what the anticipated net profits would be. Do you have any idea, Andrew?
No, the ticket sales go all back to the team, so.
If it's a hundred thousand, then I'll, we'll want percentage. But what I'm getting at is ten percent on net profit up to a thousand bucks. I mean, I don't, you know, to me, it's a partnership with the association, and what the association does directly affects a huge number of our youth in this community. And I get that the school district needs to be fiscally responsible, but to me, the dollar amounts that I would anticipate would not be material for the school district to be concerned about in terms of collecting a percentage of gross revenue resulting from the sales. So I just mentioned that for discussion purposes.
I can kind of piggyback off of that. My whole thought process was we never requested a portion of sales, but now that they wanna do something to try and make more money, we wanna take a portion of sales? I mean, if they wanted to sell something different that didn't need board approval, would we be asking for a percentage then, too? I just, I feel like it's not necessary to ask for a portion of sales.
So I, I, I don't know if we'll make a dollar on this. I guess I just kind of look at this as going forward, you know, you know, nobody's hired. I'm not sure how the agreement is for other sporting events, but you know, we're just, we get volunteers in there. Dave Albert's son is injured, grandson's injured, he doesn't, you know, he's not even playing, but you know, he kind of runs our concession stand. So I'm kind of looking at this as a, you know, as we go forward, you know, if we're setting some precedent, I guess, on, on the percentage. Like our, our expenses are, are increasing tremendously here with summer act, so I guess that's, I guess kind of look at it not just for this lease, but longer than that, I guess.
What shows the, underneath that percentage schedule in section five, it talks about non, for non Pelican Rapids amateur baseball games, what does that mean? I mean, I get-
You know, we talked to Mr. Nelson about this before. It's not as common as it used to be, but just because the playoffs have kind of changed, but as an example, you know, before Pelican got lights, we would rent dense field quite often, and we would pay, you know, then it was usually fifty dollars to, or you know, half to like a person who got the field ready, cleaned it up afterwards, and half to the city. So this, this might be similar to what we talked to Derek about a few years ago, if there was ever a, a use for, you know, and just other teams that had to use the field, I guess. But it's, you know, I don't know how relevant it would be for this, if we're just focusing on a three-week lease, but it's, it's not quite as common as it used to be, now that there's a few more towns with lights. The main purr and dent were two places that got rented, I guess, quite a bit, you know, for a while. So it, and just to, if, if I'm correct, like the cost of these lights, if someone were to rent the field, it's, it's like six or seven dollars an hour, so they're really efficient, if it ever does come up.
You know, earlier in the discussion, there was talk about maybe having it in like a contained beer garden type area, is that what the plan would be?
Yeah, we-
Don't see much of it specified in here.
Right, right, yeah. If, yeah, if approved, we would, we would definitely just have, we would have two areas away from the grandstand that, that we could fence off and just have a, a no beer policy in our grandstand would probably be the easiest for us.
It says baseball discussion, but are we looking to actually take action to me?
I don't think we can because it says discussion.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't know.
They're in.
Well, is that-
I think we can always, Mark, we can turn this into an action item.
Wait.
You're the board. I mean, technically, you should have notice and all that to the community so other people can express, but.
Well, I mean, if we, if we don't take action tonight, when is the first weekend in question?
July twenty-sixth.
Four days after our next meeting.
And you would have to go to get city approval after us?
Yep.
I'm not prepared to approve the lease as written, just because of the rental fee. I don't agree with that.
As far as the school district being entitled to a rental fee?
Correct.
If it was amended, though, to exclude that?
Then I am currently okay with the way the lease is written.
And you're talking specifically pertaining of the-
Number five.
The ten percent, fifteen percent, or the entire section?
Um, yeah, isn't it? Yeah.
So rather than, I mean, there'd still be a rent section, but?
I mean, because if you look, net profit shall include ticket sales, and that all goes to teams. Concession sales, which, I mean, they're selling candy bars and pop, beer, they probably don't make a whole lot on it anyways. They don't sell programs, and if you do, that's probably an amateur baseball profit for them.
For the region.
Right.
Yeah, it's, I, it's, I just look at that as like a long-term thing, that it's kind of, I don't-
And I just look at, we've never charged the rent.
Probably about fifty dollars, maybe, if things go well, I mean.
Andrew, the, I know, I know you don't have a breakdown of all the dollars, but just generally speaking, you've probably mentioned this to the board already, but the funds that are generated by the Pelican Rapids Baseball Association are used to fund youth baseball, correct?
Yes, yep. Legion baseball, two Babe Ruth teams, and then I guess we're eleven and twelve-year-olds now.
Which would be the youth, I didn't actually think about the youth, but the eleven and twelve-year-old youth programs, Babe Ruth, two Babe Ruth teams, and the Legion team?
Yep.
And then some sort of, um, support for the Laker amateur team?
Um, you know, not, we helped them out a few years ago, but they're, they're kind of on their own feet, so.
Would you say an overwhelming majority of the funds are used to benefit the Legion program, the Babe Ruth programs, and the eleven and twelve-year-old programs?
Oh, yes, absolutely. You know, we do have some expense from some improvements last, you know, for the state tournaments, but-
But those improvements are improvements on the school grounds.
Yep.
So I guess we can turn this into an action item if we choose.
Yeah, it must have some.
Yeah.
And just for the sake of your discussion, since you brought up the fact that the council is gonna have to take an action on this item also, the next council meeting is a week from tomorrow, and then July ninth, and then the next one won't be until July thirty.
Thanks, Tom. I'm interested in taking action to approve it. I'm not making a motion yet. Brittany, you've expressed your concerns with regard to the rent. I haven't talked to anybody else really with regard to this, the specifics of the lease provisions. We did discuss a specific area that would be closed off and specifically used for beer sales and consumption, or just consumption?
Um, yeah, our sales preferably would happen at the concession stand, but, but no consumption until you're in, in certain areas by first and third base, past the grandstand and backstop area.
And would there be a willingness, and I mean, I don't, I don't need a personal or a specific detailed breakdown with regard to how that would happen? You know, for example, if somebody buys a can of beer at the concession stand, they're not able to consume it until they reach a certain point of the baseball field area, correct?
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could monitor that, that's, so.
The association could? So there'd be a willingness of the association to monitor that? And be responsible for assuring that the consumption is only limited to the specified areas?
Yeah, we could do that.
Is that be something we'd have to stipulate in action item? I would say we could, I'd like to make a motion. So what about the fee? Fee part of it was another one Brittany was talking about. Well, I, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the lease and use of baseball park facilities with the following revisions. The first revision being in section five for rent. The word rent would remain, but the remaining balance would be removed and replaced with the following. In lieu of cash rent, the consideration provided by PRBA shall be its willingness to continue to substantially contribute to the Legion, American Legion, baseball program of Pelican Rapids. Babe Ruth comma, I'm writing this down, comma, Babe Ruth programs- Babe Ruth comma, I'm writing this down, comma, Babe Ruth programs of Pelican Rapids. And youth, other youth baseball opportunities not otherwise, not otherwise financially supported by Independent School District number five forty-eight. That'd be the first revision. And the second one would be the addition of section twenty-one at the end of the agreement. Or excuse me, rather than adding section twenty-one, I'd like to make the addition to section nine subdivision A eight.
Eight A?
With, oh, excuse, section nine subdivision A eight. Cause subdivision A is three point two percent, so.
See that now.
Okay, and it would be section, section nine subdivision A eight would have the caption, location of beer sales. And beer, or excuse me, rather than beer, I want to replace that with three point two percent malt liquor. Which is the three point two beer I think that everybody refers to. So a location of three point two percent malt liquor sales and location of three point two percent malt liquor consumption. That'd be the caption. And the terms behind that caption would read, PRBA shall be responsible and agrees shall be responsible for and agrees to sell three point two percent malt liquor from the concession stand, or concession building situated on the premises as of the date of this agreement. Period. PRBA agrees to allow the consumption of three point two percent malt liquor to be designated only in sections where they'd be fenced off sections, this is a, to be located in sections that are properly fenced and controlled to prohibit any person under the age of twenty-one years to enter. Period. PRBA agrees to be responsible for monitoring any and all transportation of said three point two percent malt liquor from said concession building to said designated three point two percent malt liquor designated consumption areas. Period. PRBA, comma, prior to selling three point two percent malt liquor, agrees to provide Independent School District number five forty-eight a drawing of the approximate designated consumption areas. And shall provide the school board for the school district of Independent School District number five forty-eight to evaluate the designated areas on site if deemed necessary by said board to determine the adequacy thereof. Period. If it is determined that additional fencing or other measures be taken to accomplish the goals stated herein, then PRBA agrees to follow any additional reasonable requirements made upon it by said school board, period. That'd be my motion.
I couldn't write any part way into that. Okay, we have a motion?
May I interject one item here?
Sure.
You're a public entity. Um, I believe the lease calls for the school district to maintain the field. I would suggest at least a cursory amount of rent to help cover that cost so that anybody from the community doesn't accuse you of showing favoritism or something or whatever, misusing funds, that you're at least getting your labor cost and water cost and whatever. And it could be as simple as, I'm just throwing a number, two hundred dollars on a vent or a hundred dollars on a vent or whatever. And that way it dispels that, that whole piece that you're just handing something over to an entity, uh, school district property for their use of, granted, it's a good cause, don't get me wrong. But how would you prevent somebody else from coming in and doing the same thing? So just by charging a minimal amount of rent, I think helps a little bit in that regard.
And when you say upkeep, what are you referring to? There is a rights and responsibilities section that does talk about, um, services um, for infield promoting, um, upkeep of the facilities cleanup checklist. The only other thing I can think of is the mowing aspect. And I believe that is because they don't own a mower? Cause you guys used to mow it, I believe.
Um, we, we just, we mowed just infield usually, but.
Okay.
But that's where I'm coming from, is just somebody comes and says, well, you gave them the field for free. We're also investing labor and machinery costs and et cetera into maintaining this field and you're getting nothing back. At least if you just charged a cursory fee of some sort that at least eliminates that piece.
But we could deny this lease and we still wouldn't charge them anything because we have never charged them any.
Correct, I get that.
Okay.
I get that.
And I understand what Mark's saying, but I think that was, the idea behind my revision was the consideration. Granted, the consideration by the PRBA doesn't benefit, I'm not sure if all youth involved with the programs I've mentioned between the Legion, Babe Ruth, and eleven, twelve-year-olds are members or, or youth that go to school here. Majority of them are. Well, that's a significant chunk of consideration the PRBA has given. And I'm looking at it more globally, I guess, with the partners, from a partnership perspective to where other groups aren't gonna have the, more than likely, aren't gonna have the track record that the Pelican Rapids Baseball Association has with regard to the opportunities it's afforded our youth throughout the past several years. And I think it's important to recognize that consideration. I understand that it might look better to have a rental amount, but I'm still comfortable with the motion I made without requiring an actual dollar amount for rent. Because of the partnership component between the association and the school district, at least in my opinion. And together with PRBA taking over, especially this year, additional activities that had usually been financially covered by the school district. I know my motion hasn't been seconded yet, but in light of what Mark said, I know Brittany had, you've offered your thoughts and I agree with you, there hasn't been any sort of, I mean, the association hasn't paid the school for, for, for maintaining any portion of the field regardless of the lease. Regardless of anybody's thoughts on the motion, does anybody have any other response to Mark's concerns with regard to the rent being incorporated in there from a perception standpoint to avoid the perception of any sort of favoritism?
There's also the precedence that you're allowing an entity to come onto school grounds and sell the alcohol, which in that case, like Mr. Cork brought up last week, where you draw the line if another group wants to come in and do something somewhere, someplace else in the district. You know, you are setting a precedence by approving this.
Like what, what kind of, I'm trying to think of other situations. I mean, I get the precedence because it certainly does, any action we take would set a precedent. But I mean, there's only certain organizations that are allowed to be issued permits or licenses at one meeting, and it may have been a work session. I think one of the concerns was what if a family reunion was to be held, you know, on school district grounds? I don't know if that's ever happened. But I don't think, I think in order for the city, and I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure of this one, but I think those, if, if, if the school district approves the entry into this lease with PRBA, then it's the responsibility of PRBA to take the proper steps to apply for a license. And then they're subject to the city's requirements whether or not they meet the threshold to be able to be issued a license. And I know, I think there're more or less the requirements of, you know, charitable organizations. Uh, I don't know if it specifically makes reference to five oh one C, um, types of organizations. I believe the PRBA is five oh one C three, does it apply to, it's actual, it's an actual five oh one C three corporation?
Yes.
Or five oh one C, some, some subdivision of five oh one C, C?
Uh, three, I believe.
Okay. So if I cut a check to PRBA, it gets tax deductible for me? So I, I mean, it prevents, it, to me, it doesn't just completely bust the door wide open for all kinds of situations. Um, but for, for bona fide organizations or whatever, organizations that fall within the requirements of the city's rules and regulations, it certainly does set the precedence. Just like any other action we do. But I wanted to just bring that up because at one meeting, there was a discussion as where do you draw the line? And the line to me gets drawn by the regulations of the city that the city currently has in place with regard to what sort of entities are even eligible to receive temporary beer licenses.
So when I brought it up one time too, drawing the line is you don't do it in a school building. You don't do it at a school event. You don't do it during the school year. And to me, that's where you draw the line hardcore. And that only gives you June, July, August. And I don't know how many events you can actually do that outside, non-school event. I mean, it kind of covers you only to football field and baseball field. Or I guess front lawn if you really want to put it there. But that's, to me, that's where I would completely draw the line. I wouldn't do anything outside of those boundaries whatsoever.
So is there any businesses in the city, I think, let's say the VFW, do they have a catering license or something? Or they could set up a, a bar at a, at an event in town or?
I don't know about the VFW, I believe it does, but I can't argue with.
Like, could they come into town or do they need a liquor license from the city to do that?
I'm not the city clerk and I don't know the ins and outs of all of it, but.
I mean, could we run into, let's say, a family reunion? We do have a facility use policy where we would charge it if it was a school-related event. Then could they bring a catering license in to set up a bar? If I were to prove, yeah. But I mean, would, I mean, that's the only thing I could think of that would be comparable if precedent was set, but.
Well, if you look at kind of like the Dunvilla, the barn at Dunvilla, they always have caters because they don't provide it. I'm not aware, yeah, I'm not aware that they would go to the city. But I don't.
The, the city would issue a license, but the city can't deny a license for somebody that comes with all the necessary paperwork if they come with all that and a caterer has that ability. So I s, I don't know for sure without, you know, doing some more research, but I'm thinking if a caterer, if a family basically come to, to the city and said, hey, we got a caterer that wants to, um, cater alcohol. There's a function. There's a possibility.
Well, we could address that if that was a situation, our facility's use, cause I, I know from the very get-go that's been a concern is having very little, um, very limited, um, control over the potential ramifications of this situation. But we have a facilities use, uh, facilities use policy, right?
Yes.
And that allows for the community to use the facility. I'm assuming there's an application process and everything that goes along with it. I think if that's a concern, um, the board could take subsequent action to modify the facility's use policy to prevent any and all alcohol being served on the premises if it's not provided by the entity that, um, organizes the event or something to that effect. Cause that's a concern for me. I wasn't thinking about a potential situation where. a caterer situation would happen, but to me, I think it's clear from a record standpoint that that's been an issue is, is what's the precedence, but to me, I'm not concerned with bona fide charitable organizations that meet the requirements of the city's regulations to subsequently make a request similar to what PRBA is doing, but I am concerned of private parties being catered to by private, privately-owned entities, like a restaurant or a bar, which to me is extremely distinguishable from, from an association like this.
Have we kind of gone over here? Do we have a second yet? You want to repeat that whole thing?
No, I'm just kidding. I mean, I can try.
Sure, yeah.
I think we got the gist of it. Mark wrote most of it down.
I wrote most of it, but I was writing too slow and I felt that I should hurry it up.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll be brave and second.
Okay. We have a motion by Greg, second by Brittany. Should we further the discussion we've already been having?
Andrew. As a representative of the PRBA, are there other? I know you've investigated quite a bit outside of our district as to how other cities that have municipal or city-owned facilities that the school district uses. But it's my understanding there are other school districts within the state of Minnesota that have allowed for the sale of 3.2% malt liquor.
Yeah, the, uh, the only ones that we've confirmed would be the Painesville situation, which most of this lease originated from. Montevideo, which was very low record of discussion, just a letter written and approved. Raymond. I don't think things officially got approved at Raymond because the tournament got pulled from them and it was sent to Wilmer and then, Ashby had no documentation of this for a few years ago and then, um, Minnewaska has no documentation because they're pretty much working through it about the, about the same time as Pelicans.
So Painesville, Montevideo, Raymond, Ashby, and Minnewaska all have school district-owned facilities?
Yes, but not, everything's been appro, Raymond stopped the process when, when they, the tournament got moved. And Montevideo is just starting the process because they're looking forward for a tournament similar to this.
Montevideo stopped the process?
No, they just had very little documentation from three years ago for a, like a town festival. They hosted an amateur tournament on their school grounds. And that was, that was catered. It was just virtually a two-sentence letter written to the school board.
And you're not sure what, where Minnewaska is with regard to their?
No, they were very similar on, on the timeframe, you know, some work sessions, you know, similar to what we've, we've talked about, so.
So Painesville would be similar to this situation if the board approved this lease, which would allow the sale for these three specific weekends of 3.2 malt liquor. Painesville would be the town that has a school district-owned facility that leases it to a similar association.
Yep.
Similar to the P- PRBA. And have you talked to anybody from Painesville on either side, whether it's the PRBA or the Painesville baseball side or the school district side?
You know, I've talked to people with their baseball association, it's probably been two years ago now, and their lease is, um, it's like a Memorial Day through Labor Day. They do take care of all the maintenance on, on their field and, um, you know, it's, you know, they just, uh, you know, it's a brand-new facility and, um, it's very nice and it's very well-tended, so it's, uh, but yeah, it's, it's school-owned property, it's, um, you know, of course, there's, you know, there's the perception they dealt with there too. It's kind of the, the people that Minnewaska are leaning on, you know, for, uh, for an example, you know, as they move forward too, so. You know, they're very, they're very well-contained. I mean, it backs up right to their football field and it's, um, it's, yeah, it's just a, it's a great facility, I guess.
How long have they had it, Painesville?
Uh, I would guess four years maybe, and, oh, maybe, maybe a little longer, it's, uh, it was a long, I mean, the whole, I think it changed when they built their new field, but it took a long time to, they dealt with a FEMA grant, it's, uh, the tornado fallout shelter, so it was a long process, but I'm guessing that's when their agreement changed with their baseball association, was when the field opened up, so. And they do, I think that's where this rent breakdown, you know, came down probably from that, from that lease. I mean, that, you know, I'm not going to lie, Painesville makes a lot of money when they're hosting tournaments. They're just, they're very well-tended. It's just great support from all the little small towns with, uh, without expecting even 25% of that probably.
For these three weekends, do you, do you have any idea what sort of revenue you generate from the sale of the 3.2% malt liquor?
No, for our, you know, our insurance would cost us 1,700. I mean, if, um, you know, if, to be honest, if we make it a few hundred dollars, we'd be fine. I just, you know, we look at, we look at the facility as, um, I mean, it's a community facility, you know, we, nobody's getting paid. We're, we do this to bring people to town. I mean, we, I mean, we put endless hours in the state league tournament last year and, and lost 2,100 dollars, you know. Would we do it again? You know, maybe in a few years if it came up. I guess we, you know, it's, it's, uh, when you deal with an adult tournament like this, it's just, um, you know, it's just a different situation. Things are expected, you know, from other league tournaments. It's, it's mostly to be in control of the situation.
Would you reasonably expect less than a thousand dollars of net revenue?
Yeah, quite possibly.
Because that would be a concern of mine. I mean, because I get the added feature or whatever you want to consider it. But to me, I mean, it does make a difference as to whether or not it was an, I mean, you don't know because it's never happened here before. But, you know, if, if, if there was a history of this being done, which there isn't, that's the problem. But if that history showed you generated 10,000 dollars for this three-weekend tournament, let's say you hosted it every year, you'd feel a lot better to assume the risks of the precedent being set, knowing that such a significant chunk of money would benefit PRBA versus going through all this and then, you know, seeing PRBA generate maybe a net 500 bucks after, whenever it's all said and done.
Any other discussion? I guess my concern is just the feedback that I've heard, you know, against it. And then the precedence thing, I think, you know, we may never cross the road again, but, um, it's kind of the direction I'm leaning right now. Any else want to comment?
Just in passing, up until last week, I'd had, you know, I'd asked when I was at the games and to see what people thought and everybody pretty much said, well, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. And I don't know if it was published or like for last meeting or if we were expected to make a decision, but like after I left the meeting last week, like I had like four or five text messages on people, you know, telling me how I should vote and why and I just, I, I just think you guys do so much, you do, and I, they do, they give back so much. And just if there was some way, even though all the signage and everything, if there was just some way that we could completely make it so everybody realized it was not affiliated with the school or, you know, somehow completely, you know, it's yours for those six days or those seven days or whatever and, um, I wish we had a better record of how many people we kind of thought were coming in. Just because like when you were just talking now, it kind of is like, well, do we go through the effort? Do we try to push this through, you know, and we're not the last stop, but, um, is it really, is it going to be worth it to you guys as well? You know, 1,700 dollars for insurance plus what we're going to have to pay for the liquor license, which I don't know. I don't know. Really mixed feelings. I don't, I don't know where I sit right now.
I just hope those that are so against it know we've organized the baseball association because you guys do such a good job and you guys are hard workers and it's more admission than I do. And, you know, just, you just do the stirrages if it doesn't pass tonight.
That's, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we understand the perception, you know, it's, um, it's, uh, you know, for us to, to host that tournament, it's, you know, it's something we want to do.
And it's good bringing people here to the community. We got a facility to show off.
Plus I've had people that.
It puts us in a tough spot.
Yep.
And I've had people that have talked to me now that say, well, what's the difference if you actually have them sell it and they make the money off of it? Or the people that bring their own coolers now to the games and sit in the stands and drink it? Which does happen.
Is the perception, and that's where I could kind of watch, is the perception of, alcohol and baseball fields don't coexist or?
Because the school.
Baseball and schools don't coexist?
No, school and no drugs nor alcohol.
School facility, yeah.
Is it a public health issue? I mean, is that the perception?
People are thinking that the school is promoting alcohol consumption.
Or it gives a conversation.
That we're okay with it.
I mean, if that's the case, I mean, there's a lot of things, even just from a nutritional standpoint, that would be on point with regard to that concern. I mean, I don't have a, I don't, I have a, I, I respect anybody's concerns, I suppose, from a perception standpoint. But I, it just wasn't certain. It's, is it, because the, the consumption of 3.2 beer is legal. It's sold all over town, right? I think there's two, three gas stations that sell it. I haven't heard, I guess, these, these concerns. I've heard it from other board members who have been contacted, but nobody's contacted me directly on, on the perspective or the perception of it being being negative in any capacity. I, I just, nobody's called me. You had a lot more calls than I did.
Yeah, nobody has directly sought me. Nobody's talked to me, but they're like, please vote no because you're setting, you know. I mean, I've asked my parents their opinion and my husband, but I, nobody's come to me.
Oh, is that, I wasn't at last week's work session, but I was here by phone. I know there was a resident who had prepared a letter, so I guess that was certainly one concern that was expressed to the board. So, but I mean, I'm talking about people specifically reaching out to me on, on a perception standpoint. I've discussed the matter with Derek Nelson to a certain degree and, um, offered him my thoughts. It's not really material to this discussion, but I wasn't able to connect with Bri, didn't connect with Brian or, or Ed on their thoughts and I had time to do so, but I guess I just didn't do that, but tried to get a feel as to the administration's perspective on, on how it felt with regard to the sale.
Anything else from? Thank you, I have a Brittany. So in this motion, uh, to be approved the lease with the changes stated by Greg, I believe. So, no further discussion?
Just one, one, one other thing, Chairperson. I mentioned that, you know, we don't have historical data on the money generated potentially by PRBA. But I, I can't hold that against them. I mean, Andrew, to his credit, he's saying he doesn't know. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to put words in Andrew Johnson's mouth, but he said it would be 300, it could be, he doesn't know. And, um, I do know, heard, you know, just the, the support of our, our youth, many of which are students of our school district and the benefits associated that they receive directly as a result of PRBA's existence in this community. So, my, my question is, I, I didn't want to be perceived as though, you know, obviously if you generated 100,000 dollars, it can be justifiable probably if you're looking at it from a nuts and bolts, dollars and cents standpoint. But I can't hold the association, I can't, I can't hold that against the association because there's no, this would be, that'd be like saying, well, we're never going to provide an opportunity because you, I think you might not make a whole lot of money. Well, if you did, then it benefits a ton of kids who are also students of our school district. Then we should be happy that we provided them that opportunity and you have to start somewhere, I guess, is my thoughts. And that's, that's all I have left on my part of the discussion, Chairperson.
Anybody else? No, should we bring it to a, well, those in favor of approving the lease, baseball park facilities? Agreement with the changes stated by Greg, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye? So it's a tie, so the motion fails? Do we move on or do we, uh, discuss? We'll move on. Operating levy discussion, item F. Your computer shut down?
Well, I, I was looking for the document. Unfortunately, it's not up there, but it was in the emails that we sent you guys. Essentially, the first step, the front work of the levy preparation is just in front of us. On the packet that we sent you in the email is, we're asking for a motion to work with our financial advisor, Victor Tilly, to put together a survey, um, that would have 30 questions, 250 calls with the Spanish translation to request the public inputs and how much we can afford to go out. And the reason why we're saying this is extremely important is because we want to do the work to understand how much our community can actually afford. We don't want to go just for an operating levy and have it fail because essentially the cost would continue to add up. We think it's best to make the investment, do the survey, understand the community, understand how much we can afford and then move forward. Other dates that we have in mind is that if you guys pass the motion to do the survey, our financial advisor will work with us between the 17th and July 1st to put together the survey. July 10th through the 20th, they would start doing the calls to the community. July tenth through the twenty fourth, they would start doing the calls to the community. August fifth, Baker Tilly, the financial advisor, would come and give us the results. On July nineteenth, the board would do a decision on possible referendum vote and the dollar amount requested and define what, what it is for. And then on August twentieth, it would be the final day for us to apply for levy. So that's kind of the timeline. Do you guys have any questions regarding why we are asking for a survey?
What was the cost of the survey then?
The one that we are requesting is thirty questions, two hundred and fifty calls and with the Spanish translation. And that comes at thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars plus one thousand, six hundred for the Spanish translation. So your cost would be somewhere between just under fifteen thousand dollars.
Where does that money come from?
General budget.
General. Just two hundred and fifty random residents?
That's exactly correct. In terms of how they collect the data, I'm assuming it's all people within our district. And they just randomly call, whoever picks up and has the time to answer this thirty questions.
Thirty questions seems like a lot. A lot, like I can't imagine somebody sitting on the line that long.
There is the option for electronic surveys. However, our financial advisor advised that they actually have better results with the phone calls. Because thirty five questions in an electronic survey, it's a little bit more than I can see.
Also thirty questions could include things like if you want the four period or four day school or five, you know, those kinds of things that can give you direction down the road. So I, first of all, I went through something similar to this. And the data that we got out of it was very, very helpful. And not all the questions were, you know, how much money can you afford to pay? It was kind of a, a long-term planning document as well for us.
Would it cost less if we just had him copy the questions and we just got together and called them ourselves?
I didn't.
If everybody bring a.
I, I don't know.
Bring this to share, yeah.
I, I don't know. I mean, if you want to take on the work, do the survey yourself, that's great. But I don't know how you would translate that into a strategy.
How about public input meetings where you pretty much have the six of us? Obviously someone with financial information, how does that react? What's the reaction towards that?
You get to who shows up.
Right, and I get that.
You don't get a true representation statistically over what the community really want, will be able to support. It's the same reason they have a, a website where people can do that, that kind of, of survey. And again, you, what tends to happen is if you're pro, let's, operating levy, you'll stack the deck, get all your people involved. And, and then by the time the vote comes, it's not what the real community is, is supporting. That's why a phone call survey is much better is that it is random. It does get a cross-section of people within the community.
Do they leave voicemails if people don't call?
We don't know the ins and outs.
Cause I can tell you now, if I don't know the number, I don't answer it. If you don't, you leave a voicemail, I really don't answer it. Now a cell phone and not landlines.
That would be a good question for us to bring back to them, but I, those specifics were not discussed.
We see any tax impact runs yet? Like per pupil, what would it cost, district residents?
Not yet, I think, for that we would have to define the dollar. And I think this would be some front work out, but to truly define how much the community can afford in front there, then they do the actuarial study to say, based on a dwelling of X dollars, this is what your potential tax impact is going to be.
Didn't Kelly run one about a year or so ago?
Yeah, yes, thank you for reminding me. I believe in September, we shared something in terms of the data. But I don't know, at that point in time, it's outdated. And I believe we presented it when we did the dotted report card back in November, early December, where it had, you know, on a home between fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, it would be X amount if we go for two fifty, five hundred or six hundred. And I think I even shared my tax statement at that time. I could try to pull that data and then just send it, but again, don't take it as concrete because I don't know how gated it is. And the other thing is we don't know how much the community will be willing to go for.
The other thing too with a, with a number of questions is you can get, kind of get a feel for other areas that they would be willing to fund. So, you know, it's not just, it would help then your strategy when you go out on the campaign and try to sell it to the community.
How about other non-English speaking languages?
The only one they offered was Spanish. And I'm guessing that was a conversation that, I wasn't part of that phone call, but I'm guessing the conversation was the superintendent requested Spanish since it is our second highest population. I could also ask if they do any others. I think this third would be Somali.
Right.
Or Swahili. But if you guys have any other recommendations, we can ask them.
Who puts the questions together?
Our financial advisor does, but in some like Mark said, we do as well where we say what can be.
They'll ask for your, your input on.
So we did this back when I first started on the board, we did the survey first. I don't know if the feedback or reflections we got from them, that was quite accurate because obviously it took us four types to pass it. We had to keep.
Was that phone call or?
Phone call. Eh, mixed comments I've heard on, heard on that, that, that time, but that was pretty good on the board.
Do you remember the dollar amount during that survey job?
I don't. Even with Springsteen, I wonder if they keep track of what it was back then or not.
I'll ask to see if there's a record.
The first one was twelve hundred per pupil. So we asked for it and that got shot down. And then it was close to the same with a two-part question and both of those got shot down. And it was something less than, we had to go less again, then the first one. So if we're talking something to three hundred to five hundred per pupil range, that's less than we've always asked in the past. So, yes.
When they do this survey like that, do they end up with record as to where the two hundred and fifty calls are, you know, came from or, you know, where the calls went? So was it majority of, when you say community, I'm assuming you're saying school district, not community of Pelican Rapids? So do they know how many calls were outside in.
How it's brought.
Different, different townships?
They'll tell you how many female responds, how many males, et cetera.
But not their residents.
And groups and things like that.
But not townships.
But they'll do everybody in that school district.
Right, but what I think what he's getting at is X amount in.
Living in town.
In Pelican Township and.
Whether it's proportion or whatever, but it will be a statistical thing.
Well, that's what I was thinking because it turns out the majority of the calls are out in the lakes area. We have the lake effect, which is not good for Pelican Rapids.
So that would be a concern.
Those are really good questions. I'll get back with Baker Tilly and ask for that information.
When do you need to know?
Well.
Yes, certainly before July first.
I, I think we're looking for backing from the board tonight to say, let's proceed. If you don't want to proceed with the survey, then that sets the tone that way.
I would definitely think we don't have much choice. I think we need to proceed.
Correct Rudy and Mark to negotiate a lower price.
I think Spanish, Spanish for free.
Yeah, I believe Brenda said that she would be willing to.
I would.
The survey.
Hey, I'd do it for half price for sure. I would do it for a really good meal. Yeah, I, I'm eating, I just need food.
So they have some data that basically they can grab cell phones often or they call a landline?
They have access to a lot of data. What it is specifically, I do not know.
Well, that's the other problem. I have a landline. I've taught my children not to answer the phone. So we don't answer that phone.
Well, if your child answered, I'm sure they would not have them go through.
Well, even for home, well, I get that, but like our phone rings in our house and we all sit there and stare at each other. We don't answer it because if you know our cell phone, that's where you call us. If you know our landline, you're soliciting.
So if Ed McMahon calls with a ten million, I am okay.
I'll just work.
That's it.
I know. It would be a real amazing call to work.
So this is just still a discussion item, but.
Yes, we can make a motion.
We need to make a motion to direct you guys to do that?
Now, if we get a motion for them to agree to explore this option, they don't have to come into actually hiring, or do they do?
No, we can come back, but I, I guess I, from our vantage point, I don't want to come out and say, well, are we going to do a study or not? I'd rather know that you want to study and then we can move forward.
So you would gather more information and then present it to us and then we would get the final word.
You would get the contract, you would get dates on when we're going to meet and all of that, so.
Well, it's cheaper than holding multiple elections, I guess. I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary work or approve the survey.
Give them word, open up the survey.
Then we approve a mission to. Operating levy survey.
To pursue it.
Yeah, we give permission to pursue it.
I'll second that.
I made a motion, Mike second. Any more discussion on operating levy survey? Any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of approving the operating levies survey, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item G, set summer work session. Is this the same one we've been trying to do on?
Degree from local place.
Oh, I didn't get to the full degree. I, yeah, I got one, but I didn't get results.
You can get results by looking at it.
Barely know how to take.
Well, after you're the first one to fill it out and you don't know.
You can go back to it. It looks like there's only five.
Greg, did you get a doodle? Meeting date? I'm sure I did.
Did you do it? Seven participants.
I would even know much email there.
It's right here. The tie, June twenty seventh or July eleventh?
I'd say we go for June twenty seventh if we have, well, others, cause then we can maybe avoid a special meeting if Rudy has stuff.
I thought this one was significant for one item. Am I wrong? This was the work session, a three-hour work session for.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, so it's only about that.
But we've got. If there's some business items, you're going to set a meeting date. If we have something that needs to be done by the.
Yeah, so we're going to need a resolution after we get back the, the packet regarding our anticipation.
And that's before?
We'd have to be down before July tenth, that is the final date.
So it's reset for June twenty seventh?
We'll need to do a special meeting then too. And a website.
Greg, does that date work for you?
It does.
It's a Thursday.
What time?
Five to eight.
Yeah, man, that doesn't, for me. Doesn't matter. It's fine, okay?
Brenda?
I'll make it work.
Five o'clock, okay for everybody? So you have a motion to make that meeting date? Okay. Motion, we have our summer work session and special meeting on June twenty seventh at five o'clock, starting at five o'clock. On June twenty seventh, yeah, at five o'clock.
To meeting first.
What's that?
Meeting followed by work session.
I, I thought you said work session and special meeting?
Yes. Do we need to word it differently or?
Wait, do you have a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll say.
Motion and a second, any discussion on June twenty seventh? No further discussion, all those in favor, so we're going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item H, resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax abatement.
So the city approached us regarding the. I'll pull up the document.
Hey, John, just before we get into it, I'm all abstained from any sort of discussion of voting on it. And as a result of a conflict I have with regard to the preparation of documentation involved with the action.
Okay, I understand.
So we were approached regarding a tax abatement project that's happening. And Don here is to kind of share a little bit some history regarding, regarding what it is about. But essentially this is regarding the, the colony, which is a new apartment building that will potentially break ground. Believe in the northwest side of town. In two thousand and sixteen, the board at the time passed a resolution supporting the tax abatement. What, what it means in terms of a financial impact to the school district, essentially what it is, is I'll try to, see if I can rotate this. Essentially what it is, is, is a proposed reduction where, where the project would not give us pretty much any tax or any levy dollars. What that is, it's a fifteen-year plan tax abatement project. Essentially, it will range anywhere between sixty-six hundred to about sixty-nine hundred dollars over fifteen years. So we could lose a potential revenue of about seventy thousand dollars over fifteen years. So that is the monetary to the school district. That is what I have to say in terms of it. It's up to you guys for discussion and Don, if you want to share anything regarding.
Yeah, basically. Sure. Basically, you know, this is something that we came to the, the school and the county and the city, all three entities basically have to approve the tax abatement. At, in two thousand and sixteen, when that apartment project was being planned out, it was a thirty-two unit. They've changed it now to a thirty-six unit. The reason, the reason it didn't go forward last time or in two thousand and sixteen is because when we actually went, when the developer finally had his bid opening for the construction cost, they were substantially higher because interest rates had risen a little bit at the time. So his construction costs were substantially higher than what he anticipated. And the city also is putting infrastructure out to that site. And the infrastructure we're putting out to that site was estimated to be about five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.